Good evening, please be seated. I'd like to remind everyone, this meeting is being recorded and streamed live on our website. Please can members also remember to speak directly into their microphone and to switch them on before speaking. I've also been asked at meetings of the council to make a standard evacuation announcement. Please note that in the case of an emergency, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the council chamber at once, taking your personal belongings with you. Follow the green fire exit signs to leave the civic centre onto Duke Street via the stairs, which are located near to the end of the corridor adjoining this chamber. Lifts should not be used. Please gather by the Wall Memorial immediately outside the civic centre, and if and when it's safe to return to the building, an announcement will be made. You should not return to the building until told it is safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only councillors, officers, and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please, would you silence or switch off your mobile phones whilst the meeting is taking place? I would like to remind members that there are three styles of voting that can be used tonight. These are a show of hands, voting by assent, or a recorded vote, which would have to be requested by ten members. I would also like to remind members that those moving an item of business have ten minutes and a writer reply for five minutes. Those seconding items have five minutes and can reserve the right to speak before the mover of the motion has the final say. All other councillors can only speak once for five minutes per item. This must be before I invite the seconder or mover to speak at the end. Thank you. Agenda item one, apologies for absence. I've received apologies for absence for this meeting from councillors Bugby, Thompson, Wilson, John, Canning and Sizme. Are there any others to report?
No, that's all I'm aware of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, councillor. Oh, right. Oh, lovely, thank you. Agenda item two, mayor's announcements. Please join me in a minute's silence for past mayor Alan Arnott, who recently passed away. Please stand if you are able. Thank you. I would like to invite councillor Robinson to speak, please.
Thank you, yes. Alan passed away in early January. Now, I know that many of you here won't have known Alan, certainly not when he was first elected in nineteen seventy nine. That was even before Mrs Potter. And he served in Southwoodham for four years and was re-elected to the Chelmsford Council in two thousand and three for another twelve years till twenty fifteen, representing Patching Hall. And I joined him in Patching Hall for the last of those four years. And it was in his second, that second term of office and his, in his last period that he was elected as mayor in twenty ten, eleven. And as mayor, he raised over thirty thousand pounds for charity. Alan was a wonderful and kind and caring man, mayor, father, grandfather and councillor. Jackie was the perfect mayoress for the, for the year. Both of them deeply committed to the community in Chelmsford, and they both represented the citizens of Chelmsford very well. As a ward colleague, he was kind to me when I was first elected here and supportive. A lovely ward colleague, we did an awful lot together for the community along with late Tom Smith Hughes. And he also was the local Lib Dem branch treasurer and also a range of other community interests. Some of you will be aware of his enthusiasm for the Twinning Association and his other international links. He was a member of obviously the Twinning Association and the local language societies and the, I think the secretary of the National Trust, Chelmsford National Trust Group. So he put an awful lot back into the community that he served here in Chelmsford. We miss him, I, I miss him as a local resident and neighbour and send best wishes to his family who are here in Chelmsford. He was much respected by all of us, by the community, and we'll all miss him.
Thank you. I would also like to send our consolences to the family of councillor Dick Madden, whose wife, wife Catherine passed away recently. So far, by the end of February, the mayoral team will have undertaken two hundred and ninety-three engagements and meetings. So we've been quite busy. Charity events we've held include the charity show and the quiz night since Christmas. And we've got quite a few forthcoming events, including the YMCA Sleep Easy on the eighth of March, where people will be sponsored to, actually, you can sleep out in your own garden or at home, or some people will be sleeping out in the cathedral grounds as well. A Caprice Wind concert on the ninth of March, Mother's Day afternoon tea on the tenth of March, a New City Voices concert on the twentieth of April, and a large mayor's charity ball on the eleventh of May. So we're going to be quite busy, and if you watch out for the newsletters, there'll be more details of events in there. It would be great if you could join us. Okay, moving on to agenda item three, declarations of interest. Members will be aware of the need to declare any interest they have in the business at this meeting, either now or when we come to the item. Does anyone wish to declare any interest at this point? Thank you. Item four, minutes. The minutes of the meetings on the sixth of December have been distributed. Are you happy to accept them as a correct record? In that case, the minutes are approved. So we move on to public questions. Any member of the public, after giving their name and address, may ask a question on which the council has powers or duties which affect the city. Questions must not exceed two minutes, and the total period allowed for question time under the council's rules of procedure is thirty minutes. There is not an opportunity for supplementary questions. We've had two questions submitted by the public, however, I understand that neither member of the public are here to ask the questions in person. They were published on our website this morning and have been circulated to all councillors as well. I will therefore ask councillor Moore, as the relevant cabinet member, to now respond to the two questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would like to thank the two members of the public for submitting their questions this evening. They both concern areas of green space in Danbury. And I had the opportunity to visit both green spaces this afternoon, founding areas of naturalising snowdrop violet and daffodils in what is essentially a glade with mature silver birch and, I think, beech trees, an area sloping to a pond that provides secluded and sheltered spot that's ideal for wildlife. And the other area is adjacent to Maldon Road, close to two houses. The city council will continue to apply the policy for creating and managing species-rich grasslands to land that we have control over, and will undertake another review of the implementation of this policy in this area during the upcoming growing season to see if any further adjustments to the maintenance regime are appropriate in accordance with that policy. But please note, this is not a rewilding policy, which is generally considered to be concerned with the restoration of a generally larger-scale ecosystem to the point where nature is allowed to take care of itself. Rewilding seeks to reinstate natural processes over a considerable amount of time, allowing them to shape the landscape and the habitats within. In comparison, the city council's policy for creating and managing species-rich grassland involves regular care and maintenance with targeted interventions to control invasive species. The underlying principle is that swards are not mown so frequently but are allowed to flourish and renaturalise, rather than perpetuating low species diversity, which is dominated by grasses that results from the frequent mowing practice. Public question number two asks similar questions about the rewilding of hoiners in Danbury. I would ask the questioner to please consider paragraphs thirty-seven and thirty-nine of our policy for the creation and management of species-rich grassland in the context of the policy as a whole, rather than in isolation. The policy's intent is very clear. This is about creating connected grasslands rich in native wildflowers, supporting more wildlife, ones that are more resilient to environmental change, and which enhance ecosystems and promote biodiversity. The approach we've adopted to implement the policy is equally clear. That's set out in paragraph twelve of the policy. It outlines a reversal of the previous approach whereby, as a matter of course, grassland would be frequently mown, to one where the assumption will be to adopt a maintenance regime to encourage species-rich grassland as the first option. That will be overridden only if circumstances and specialist use demands otherwise. As indicated in my response to the first question, the city council will continue, therefore, to apply the policy for creating and managing species-rich grassland to land in its control, and will undertake another review of the implementation of this policy in this area during the upcoming growing season. The review is unlikely to result in regular, close mowing of the entire area, as I've outlined, and this would be contrary to the policy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Agenda item six is cabinet question time. At the time of the deadline of noon on Monday, three questions had been submitted for cabinet members. There is a writer reply to ask a supplementary question or comment, which, if exercised, also applies to the cabinet member. The first is from councillor Armstrong, and I'll ask councillor Moore to respond to it. Councillor Armstrong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Many of my residents have complained to me that across the city council, at the end of the growing season, they have noticed that after the council had cut the grass, cuttings had not been removed or placed in designated compost heaps on site. Please can the cabinet member confirm that in future, all areas designated for species-rich grassland, that the cuttings will be removed or placed in designated compost heaps on site? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Armstrong. Well, where possible and practical to do so, cuttings are and will be collected and removed after the end of season cut in accordance with our policy for creating and managing species-rich grassland. The arisings are collected and composted off-site alongside other greenways, such as hedge cuttings from the city council's parks and grounds maintenance operations. And the compost is then recycled, used as part of the parks and grounds operation as a soil improver and a mulch as required. The grounds maintenance team already do have access to tractor-mounted equipment for grass collection, and that's been deployed to collect and remove cuttings as part of the end-of-season cut for larger areas. But as part of ongoing machinery replacement programme, alternative types of grass-cutting equipment with additional cut-and-collect capability are now being added to our fleet. This equipment will be delivered in April. This will provide more capacity to enable to cut and collect, particularly in smaller and more confined spaces that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to come back, councillor Armstrong?
Yes, please, thank you. Thank you for confirming that the clippings will be removed. That is vital to achieve the minimum nine species per metre squared defined within the guidance referenced in point six of Chelmsford policy. The increase in species is wonderful, however, with the increase of species, additional maintenance may be required. Section E of the guidance referred to within our policy provides important information on managing competitive and problem species, one example being cow parsley, for that, which the guidance recommends reinstating regular mowing and removing the cuttings. A second example, my name's sake, Jacobaea vulgaris, also known as ragwort, this species may require pulling and digging prior to flowering. Will the cabinet member confirm that the required tools and training will be provided to Chelmsford City Council staff and contractors so that they are able to identify and manage the new potential environmental risks?
Councillor Moore?
Thank you again for the follow-up question, and yes, you're absolutely right. It's very important to diminish the nutrient quality of the soil in order that wildflowers can override the, the grasses which are flourishing on nitrogen-rich soil. In terms of the, the two species you mentioned, cow parsley does provide valuable habitat and also a source of nectar for the orange-tipped butterfly. It's a very important part of our ecosystem. We would not use chemicals, poisons, because chemicals can be anything, in order to manage those, but we would presumably cut back and dig out. Ragwort is another example of, of a species that is toxic to horses. However, it's very important for Cinnabar moth, and it's part of the wider ecosystem. And Cinnabar moth is fed on by cuckoo, which are threatened birds, so we need to achieve a balance. I didn't receive this follow-up question in advance, so I can't give you the details of the exact regime for managing ragwort and other species, but I'm very happy to follow up with officers and provide a list of how those species are managed. And just to confirm, if, if a species is invasive, and like knotweed, Japanese knotweed, we will be tackling that absolutely to ensure that we are enriching our native species. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question is from councillor Thorpe-Aps, and I'll ask councillor Marie Goldman to respond to it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The theatre refurbishment has been debated at both full council and cabinet, and I'm aware that the task and finish group is currently looking into reasons why the cost of the modernisation project, originally the enhancement project, increased dramatically from the original budget of one million pounds to a final cost of almost four million pounds. In addition, many of the enhancements were not carried out, and this too is being examined by the task and finish group. My question relates to the reports made at council and cabinet and why residents have been given answers which would appear to be inaccurate. For example, on the tenth of October last year at cabinet, in answer to my question about the theatre budget overspend, the leader stated, and I quote, "As we have said many times, it was not an initial, an initial budget, but an initial estimate. There's been only one budget for the theatre, and this is the one we have delivered against." In the approved minutes of full council on the twenty-second of March, twenty twenty-two, an update was recorded. This was not exposed to the public for commercial reasons, but an increase in the budget was sought. It clearly states the original budget has increased, had increased, sorry, twice, and costs had increased by a hundred and seventy-five percent. Members expressed concerns about this increase and the lack of detail in what was being delivered for the new budget. This issue is important, as it's clear the council faces difficult budget constraints. Why has this administration continually tried to justify the massive overspend on the theatre project by making statements at council meetings which are at odds with the facts set out on page one hundred and twenty-six of this council, full council agenda pack? Can you now confirm that the original budget was indeed one million pounds, as noted on page one hundred and twenty-six, and that this has, this has successively increased to three point two four five, sorry, three point two four six million by this administration? Given it's now over a year since the theatre reopened, will you please also tell us what the total costs have been? Thank you.
Councillor Goldman?
All right, councillor, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to obviously address, is that working? I can't tell that one. No. That one is, all right. Let's try that again. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to councillor Thorpe-Aps for the question. As councillor Thorpe-Aps will very much be aware, we have already set up a task and finish group, of which councillor Thorpe-Aps is a member, to undertake a systematic and objective assessment of the theatre refurbishment project. This will determine the level of achievement of the objectives, compare the planned costs and benefits, and benefits with actual costs and benefits, review the efficiency and effectiveness of the approach and working practices, and consider the overall value for money achieved. I understand that councillor Thorpe-Aps, while a member of that task and finish group did not attend the first meeting, where the issues raised in his question were discussed, but I'll try to explain them as simply as I can here, because despite explaining this many, many times before, councillor Thorpe-Aps is obviously struggling with the concept, so let's try an analogy. It's a bit like buying a car. Lots of members of the public watching this will probably be familiar with the idea that you think, one day, I'd like to buy a car. So you save and you set aside some money for it. When it comes time to looking at the different models of car, you look at your savings and you say, right, that's what I've got saved, so that's my budget. And then you go into the car showroom, and you have a look at all the options, all the different cars in front of you, and you realise that you really want a car that rates pretty highly in crash tests, and that's going to cost you a bit more than you had originally budgeted. Then you think, well, although I don't need a big boot now, I'm probably going to need a big boot that has space for a future child's buggy, or, or maybe a dog, or some camping equipment. So you say to yourself, I might as, I might as well buy a car that offers that now. Otherwise, I'll just have to do it a year or two down the line, and that might actually work out more expensive if I do it that way, and it'll certainly be more hassle. So then you look at your savings that you might have set aside for other things, and you reprioritise, because it makes sense. That's the first point. After you've had a proper browse of the cars available, it's the first time that you have a proper, realistic, informed budget. And just in case it isn't clear where this analogy is, this was March, twenty twenty-two, when a capital budget of two point seven five million pounds was presented and approved by full council. Up until that point, we had just been thinking that we might buy the car, or rather, do something with our theatre. But up until that point, we really weren't sure what, and we really, and we certainly hadn't kicked any tyres, to stretch the analogy a bit further. So you buy the car. But when you've had it for a few months, you realise that there are some things that need doing that you hadn't originally bargained for. Maybe it needs new brakes, maybe the windscreen develops a crack. These aren't your fault, but you need to go back and look at your savings again, because now that you've got the car, you've got to fix it. In our story, this is the equivalent of October, twenty twenty-two, when cabinet approved an additional five hundred thousand pounds, largely, largely as a result of the need to use more external consultants, the effects of inflation, and unexpected issues in the supply chain. This took our total budget to three point two four six million, and it's a budget that, to be clear, I fully expect the final project figures to fall within. So that's pretty much what we did. We set aside some savings, not to buy a car, but to invest in our community, to create a theatre that is fit for the wonderful city that we live in and want to thrive for the years to come. And it's worked. We have a beautiful theatre that is not only attracting more shows than ever, but more shows are selling out than ever. We're bringing in new audiences too, which mean, which means new customers for Chelmsford businesses as visitors spend money in our shops and restaurants as part of their outing to the theatre. Now, I wasn't going to say this bit, but I am actually, because I'm not sure whether councillor Thorpe-Aps is genuinely obsessed with semantics or whether he's trying to look for a political gotcha moment. I'm certainly not sure it is all that helpful for, for members of the public, but seeing as he's gone there. If he would like to pursue the insistence, his insistence, on the so-called original budget figure further, I would just like to remind him that when his party ran the council, in twenty sixteen, they went out to Tender to build a new riverside leisure centre. The tender, and you can look it up online, was estimated at twenty-one million pounds. It ended up costing the council, this council, at least forty million pounds. And that's without the two million pounds that my party discovered had been left off that budget in a rather extraordinary lack of transparency. Both of those figures are in order of magnitude greater than what he appears to be trying to criticise this administration for. But, look, at the end of the day, we both, we have both a fabulous leisure centre and a beautiful, successful theatre. How about we let the task and finish group get on with its job and be grateful that unlike many councils around the country, who are having to close these sorts of facilities, Chelmsford residents are able to carry on enjoying ours?
Councillor Thorpe-Aps?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the response. I would say if the election doesn't pan out for her later this year, she may want to try her hand at second car sales. She seems an expert in it. Also, she's talking about it in terms of personal finances, but this is public money. So I'm pursuing it because it's public money, and I think it's, is relevant to the people at home. Councillor Goldman also said in that, what shall we call it, in that speech, that she's proud to promote Chelmsford as a cultural centre. Unfortunately, this doesn't seem to apply to amateur dramatics. The Chelmsford Amateur Dramatic, Operatic and Theatre Society recently received an email from the city council informing them that from the first of April, they'll no longer be provided with parking permits at Fairfield Road. When the society hires the theatre for productions, Chelmsford's amateur societies are concerned that theatre hire costs are increasing and putting pressure on the volunteers who help to put on performances. I hope councillor Goldman would agree with me that amateur dramatics is to be encouraged alongside professional performances, and I'd ask her to commit this evening to reverse the council's decision on parking permits. And going back to my initial question, this wasn't about the problems found during the project itself, but this administration's response, specific responses to members. The minutes of the council meeting on the twenty-second of March, twenty twenty-two, state that the cost of the project previously reported to members had been estimates. You've now agreed that the estimates, that the, that the estimate was over twice the original budget, but the project was allowed to continue. Chelmsford, Chelmsford's residents need to be sure that the Liberal Democrat administration is fit to manage a budget. As I said before, this is public money. The oversight of the theatre project doesn't provide that reassurance to us, nor does the administration's apparent confusion over what was a budget and what was an estimate. And subsequent obscurations, as we heard this evening, give confidence, give no confidence that lessons have been learnt to help inform and improve your delivery in future. This council and the general public deserve honesty and transparency on these issues. The task and finish group, as she correctly points out, I am a member of, needs to report to the overview and scrutiny committee. Can you confirm, please, that a full report covering total project costs will be made available to that committee's meeting on the third of June this evening? available to that committee's meeting on the 3rd of June this year? Thank you.
councillor Goldman. Thank you. Well, it's afraid that, it's a shame really that councillor Thorpaps had pre-written his supplementary question, because actually if he was genuinely interested in answers to those questions, he could have written to me beforehand and, and asked me them. But, and he also probably wasn't really listening to the answers that I gave, because when he's talking about, you know, he's still going on about budget and not understanding, really didn't listen to what I was saying, that's really, really disappointing, because you're just trying to, I'm afraid that councillor Thorpaps is just trying to mislead the public. It's really, really disappointing. If we're talking about order of magnitude, £21 million original estimate for the, for the Riverside Leisure Centre, and it cost over £40 million, I mean, that's tens of millions of pounds more. You see, but he seems a little bit obsessed with this, how much money it costs, et cetera. And he's absolutely right to point out that it is public money. Absolutely right, absolutely right. But we've seen in the audiences that are attending the theatre just how well-loved the theatre is, and, and the extra money that we are bringing in through the bars, and also the extra people they are bringing into local businesses. I think it's a great investment, and frankly, if it had cost a bit more, if, I know he keeps banding around the figure of £4 million, which is not where I expect us to get to, but if it did get to £4 million, would that really be so bad? Is this, investing in Chelmsford's future, I think is a really good thing to do. Now, turning to the, his other question, his supplementary question, which I'm afraid, Madam Mayor, wasn't really supplementary, but was an entirely different subject, although I would suggest that it's actually out of order. However, I will answer it, because I will answer it by saying that councillor Thorpaps is unfortunately being incredibly disingenuous, because having had the KODs question that was submitted to me, he will also know that I answered KODs as well, so he already has the answer to that. We unfortunately, I'm, I'm pretty sure he probably does, I, it would be very surprising to me if, if he'd been supplied with a, a question that KODs had asked me, but not with the answer that I'd also replied, but maybe I'm wrong on that, and I'm willing to concede that maybe that isn't the case. However, let me give you the answer. The answer is that yes, we are having to make changes to the way that our hires are working at the theatre and across the council. Because in case, in case councillor Thorpaps hasn't noted, this is a budget-setting meeting, and councils across the country are having to set their budget at this time of year, and it is, they are doing that in incredibly difficult circumstances. We would love to have free parking for all of our hires. We would love to have free parking, frankly, we'd love to have free parking for the people who come to our theatre, but we simply can't afford that. So we're having to make what we believe are relatively, fair, I would say. That's what we're all about, fairness, fair changes. And unfortunately, that means that we simply can't afford to keep on giving out free parking permits to hires of our theatre. That's not just for the fabulous companies like KODs, but that's also, also for our bigger hires as well. So, and then I think he asked another question, which was about, which, again, another question, Madam Mayor, a question about whether I can confirm that the full details of, that the full figures will be released to the overview and scrutiny committee, I think he said, in June. I can't confirm that, he knows that I can't confirm that, I think, because I don't know yet when the final contract figures will be settled, whether there will be any legal implications of that, so I simply can't commit to that, because I'm legally not able to commit to that. It's not a case of obfuscating, as he has suggested, it is a case of I'm not legally able to do that, but I will reiterate that the budget, the final budget that was set in October 2022 for the theatre project, which has been a tremendous success, was 3.246 million pounds. I expect the final figure to come within that 3.246 million pounds. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The third question is from councillor Scott, and I'll ask councillor Marie Goldman to respond to that one.
Okay, I do welcome the theatre's new booking system, which I believe is called Spectrics, and this allows people with disabilities to book accessible seats online for themselves and for their carer. Excellent. However, this is not matched by the facilities available at the theatre itself to support disabled people. Despite the huge costs incurred, flexible seating and a changing places facility for people with disabilities have never been provided. Now, when this was challenged, I was told, fair enough, that there was not enough room for a changing places within the theatre, and the solution was to have a mobile changing places facility, and that would be made available for non-ambulant disabled people with complex needs. Has this ever happened, and if so, when and at what cost? If not, what are the plans to make the promise a reality for disabled people with heterogeneous requirements who attend the theatre? I'd be very interested to know.
Thank you, councillor Goldman.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Scott for the question. It's a, it's a really important question, you know, what are we doing to make sure that everybody is able to access our theatre? And sometimes, and I'll go through in a minute some of the things that we have, that we have done, and we've been successful at doing, and sometimes things just don't work out quite as, as planned, and they take longer than expected. So as a result of the refurbishment, as councillor Scott will be aware, the theatre team started work to develop a new policy and, and commitment to ensure that there is a changing places provision, all relaxed performances, once the refurbishment was finished. And the theatre is working to utilise the council's mobile unit to provide sufficient space and equipment for people who have profound and multiple learning disabilities, as whether, as well as other serious impairments, and who are often not able to use the toilet independently, which is the point of a mobile, a point of a changing places facility, right? The mobile unit that we've got has gone, has undergone some essential maintenance, and is being stored and used by Essex County, by Essex Cricket Ground, where there is an agreement for other organisations, such as the theatre, to book and utilise it on an ad hoc basis. Excuse me. City council staff are currently working to source a supplier who can transport clean, empty and maintain the unit, maximising its use. And actually, I would make a request of councillor Scott, because genuinely, we are looking for a supplier who can help us with that. So if councillor Scott or any other councillors present are able to help, point us towards a supplier that can, that can do that, we would be very grateful to, to receive that information. We will keep on looking. In the meantime, the unit has been utilised throughout the summer, last summer obviously by Essex Cricket Club, and working so well that it's being used throughout the winter months by the Graham Gooch Centre for Disabled Cricket, Cricket Club members. But a changing places facility, as councillor Scott alludes to, is by no means the only way that accessibility can be improved, or indeed has been improved. There have been significant improvements to the accessibility and inclusivity of the building, as well as its programme, to diversify its audiences and ensure the venue is welcoming to all. So, just a quick rundown of some of them. So these include, not limited to, but these include, a refurbished and enhanced disabled toilet, separating, separating out the previously integrated baby change unit into its own space, a wider ambient cubicle installed on all toilet areas with handrails, the installation of new automatic doors to both the main foyer and the studio, brand-new hearing loop technology installed throughout the entire building, across box, box office counters, bar, cafe, confectionery areas, and in the auditorium, and wheelchair-friendly lowered counters throughout, across the box office counters and bar, cafe and confectionery areas. There's been improved website navigation and enhanced accessibility of the customer website with improved content that allows better pre-planning for visitors with accessibility needs. There's been better wayfinding with more accessible signage, utilising the council's latest standards, and best practice developed during the capital improvements made to Riverside and to Chelmsford Museum. And finally, the theatre recruited a new events and outreach manager, manager, a role responsible for developing a new programme to ensure the theatre reaches out beyond its walls. They will consult with and involve communities in future programming decisions, whilst increasing awareness and engaging and encouraging people to participate more in what is already on offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scott, did you want to come back?
Councillor Goldman, I do appreciate all that you've said. However, I will say that as, other than relaxed performances, I can say that I have people in my own ward who do not need relaxed performances, but are quite disabled and do require a changing places facility. I am pleased that you've mentioned the mobile changing places situated at Essex County Cricket Ground, and I hope it finds its way to our theatre, hopefully for all, not just people that, for relaxed performances. But I would like to stress one thing, and I feel this from my heart, I would like to clarify that a changing places amenity is for those requiring this facility desperately, and it is not an altruistic indulgence. Thank you.
councillor Goldman.
I think you will never hear me suggest that that kind of facility would be an altruistic indulgence at all, and that, that's absolutely not how we would view things, certainly not how my party would do, anything like that. It's a very, I find it quite strange, but anyway. If you, look, the theatre team are very, very keen to support as many people with different needs to come to the theatre as possible, and that's part of the outreach work that we're doing as well. So if you'd like to write to me and, and describe the difficulties that people are having, and whether there's something that we can put in place, I'd be very, very happy to explore that, because I would like to make the theatre as inclusive as possible.
Thank you. The three reports under item seven are from the Cabinet on the 14th of November and will be introduced by councillors Marie Goldman and councillor Robinson. The first one is on the local council tax scheme for 2024 to 2025. Councillor Marie Goldman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so I, I don't intend to go through this one in any detail. It was presented to Cabinet. It's the local council tax support scheme. It's very similar, as I said, to Cabinet, it's very similar to previous years, almost identical, in fact. We would like to make this, this scheme much more generous. We can't afford to make it more generous, and we certainly wouldn't want to make it any less generous. That certainly wouldn't be helpful for any Chelmsford residents who rely on this scheme. So I'd like to formally propose it.
Thank you. Have we a second, er? Yep, councillor Robinson, thank you. Is the recommendation to approve the support scheme agreed? Agreed, thank you very much. The next item on, is on the amendments to council tax premiums in respect of empty properties. Councillor Marie Goldman, again, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this could be a long meeting this evening, so I don't propose to go through this in any detail. Again, it did come to Cabinet, and I propose it as written out in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we a second, er? Thank you very much. The motion is to approve the recommendations in the report. Are the recommendations agreed? Thank you very much. The next item is 7.3, it is on the capital treasury management investment strategies for 2024/25. Councillor Robinson, please.
Thank you very much. Yes, as you say, these went to Cabinet. There are three separate strategies here. The capital strategy is, doesn't cover the detail of the capital budget, we'll come to that a bit later on, but this is how we, basically how we fund the capital strategy and manage it over the medium term. We've got very good officers who ensure that we keep, are kept on the straight and narrow, unlike some other councils not too far away. And so it's a robust strategy, ensures that every, the decisions that we take on the next, on the budget item are actually implemented. The treasury management strategy and the investment strategy is about how we manage our investments for the cash and other investments that we don't have an immediate need for, and that, that sets out, and those have gone through committee and onto Cabinet. And so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Have we a second, er?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like to speak? Councillor Whitehead.
Without my phone, I'm tempted to say that I'll save any comments for the next item rather than repeat them all twice.
Okay. Right. Okay, the recommendation is to approve the strategies in the report. Would those in favour please show? We are going to do a show of hands this time, please. Please show if you are in favour. Okay. Thanks. Those against? Any abstentions? Okay, the recommendation is to approve the strategies, is agreed. Item eight is on the budget for 2024/25. Please note that no amendments received to this item by the 12pm deadline on Monday. Therefore, after it is discussed, we will move straight to the recorded vote. Councillor Robinson will introduce it.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to apologise to anyone who was at Cabinet, because I, what I say, most of what I say you probably have heard before, but perhaps you weren't paying attention, so you catch up this time. I'd like to start by thanking the finance team, Mr Reeves and, and all his colleagues who've worked closely with me and Cabinet to draw up the proposals, and thank you to budget holders right across the council, who've done their level best to come up with proposals to save money so we can balance the budget in ways that will affect service levels as little as possible. But the biggest thank you goes to all of our staff of the City Council. Wherever you work, whether in the civic centre here or operational sites around the district, you play a key role in running vital services for the 180,000 residents of our district. And so it's only with, with that effort and input that I'm able to say that I'm extraordinarily proud to be leader of this fantastic council. Those 1,100 or so staff who turn up to work every single day, so many of whom going above and beyond what is required of them, to be the best they can for our community, especially when some of our particularly vulnerable residents need us the most. Four years ago, we presented the first Liberal Democrat budget for 16 years, and we thought that was a few, had a few challenges. Little did we know that the global pandemic was just around the corner, so our 2021 and 22 budgets were knocked off course because incomes of the council vanished during lockdown. And then our 2023 budget had to deal with rampant inflation. Energy prices tripled from 1.3 million in 2021 to 3.7 million in 2023, and other costs rose by around 20% over that same two years or so. And this was a huge shock to the system, not, obviously not just for this council, but for the country, for the world. And this country had become so accustomed to low inflation, that inflation had not been above 3% for 30 years. So that's the context for this budget, and there's a bit more detail on pages five and six of the report that covers that. So what are the changes that we're proposing for the coming year? These are on page seven, in table one, which shows that we were facing a shortfall compared to the current year of 7.55 million, mainly caused by the rising costs of homelessness, that's an extra 3.7 million, general inflation of 1.7 million, and rising construction and capital costs of about a million, plus a collection of mostly one-off items. This is a very substantial percentage of our gross turnover. Intact in percentage terms, it's rather more than Essex County Council, although Essex's figures are numerically much larger. We propose to fill that gap from a combination of extra income from charges and from council tax, spending reductions, using some of our reserves, and hoping that promised support from the government does actually come about. Let's be clear, not just this council, but all councils face the same challenge. Without more funding from central government, next year is the last time that we will be able to balance the finances without making significant changes to services. Every authority in the country is tackling the most difficult budget position it has ever faced, leaving its financial position severely challenged. For example, the budget for homelessness costs is set out in the report, and we're assuming that we'll be, the number of families that are homeless will increase from 464 last November to 620 by March 2025. We'll come back to that later. We are proposing a number of actions to address these challenges, are set out on page nine, and we will start looking at future years as soon as this budget is settled. Government support, or lack of it, has been much discussed in the media recently, so shall we look at page 10? When government support for all councils has been falling dramatically since 2010. We used to get over £11 million a year in revenue support grant, and we now get zero. They then had to invent some new top-up grants so they can pretend that we aren't actually worse off from one year to the next. Nationally, between 2010 and 2022, real-term spending per head on cultural services was cut by 43%, on roads and transport by 40%, on housing by 35%, and on planning and development by a third, with more cuts pencilled in this year by the Chancellor. If we look at table two, especially the yellow section, the first line, you see business rates. We collect £82 million, but we're only allowed to keep 3.9 million of it. Then they have to top that up in the last couple of years, so that they can say they've frozen business rates, but we still get a little bit more money. New homes bonus, that, we used to get that for four years, then it, we used to get it for two, and now it's only one year at a time, and we never know from one year to the next whether we're going to get it next year. This is supposed to be a sort of reward for building new houses. It barely covers our extra cost of delivering services to those new houses. So that looks, okay, well, we've got 1.59 million, but then they kind of undermine that by taking money away on the next two lines. So, the basic grant that we get from the government is that, those last two lines, just 1.63 million compared to our total expenditure of 111 million. And that, even that support is down from 2.1 million a year ago. So, but in response to... So, but in response to collective lobbying from, by councils around the country, we were grateful for a little bit of extra cash a couple of weeks ago, only two hundred and twenty six thousand pounds towards our seven point five million shortfall, but it's better than nothing. Page twelve refers to the homelessness prevention grant. We hope this will increase, but it's not confirmed. And that page explains that there's a lot more uncertainty about the future of central government support for councils. Housing and homelessness, as you know, is such a big challenge, an existential challenge for district councils, both financially and socially. And there's a substantial section on this in pages thirteen to fifteen and councillor Foster could speak on that later. Pages fifteen and seventeen to seventeen, which is table six onwards, summarizes all the different cost pressures that we face. The largest, of course, is paying our very valuable, very important staff. The minimum wage is set by the government and on the first of April it will go up from over twenty ones to eleven pounds forty four, which is a rise of nine point eight percent. And for younger people, it's actually going up by fifteen percent. And don't get me wrong, I'm all in favour of ensuring that the lowest paid in society get extra help with the rising cost of living. But this affects one-fifth of our staff directly, many others indirectly, and obviously thousands of others who work in the care and NHS sectors and the like. So a mandated rise of ten percent when council tax is only allowed to rise by three percent gives us a big challenge. And there's other, there's more in the report about energy costs and other staff pressures. Page eighteen, there's a number of one-off items which we're going to cover from reserves. Page nineteen explains the other measures that we're taking to balance the budget from extra income, including from car parks, and reduce spending. This is the fifth year that we've had to remove substantial sums from existing budgets. For the coming year, it's about a million. Last year, it was over one point five million, the year before nearly a million, before that, two million, and before that, before Covid, half a million. That's six million pounds of spending that we have taken out of the council's base budget over the period. This will have some impact on service levels. But a key reason that it hasn't had a major impact on services is that our very professional staff are working harder than ever before. Page twenty describes some service improvements that we are able to propose. As you know, when we talked about this before, revenue, the cash budget, is under severe pressure everywhere. But the capital or investment programme remains ambitious and is, has a bit more flexibility in it and means that we can continue our aim of a greener, fairer and more connected Chelmsford. Money for capital investment is easier to come by than revenue. So we will continue the plan to plant one tree for every resident of Chelmsford, build fifty eight genuinely affordable homes, with which we're now securing planning permission. We will support more families who are homeless, including twenty four modular units for single homeless people with CHES. Upgrade floodlights at Chelmer Park, modernise the pool and heating at Southwood and Ferrars, improve facilities at the museum, the indoor market, children's play areas and two key centre, city centre car parks. We'll upgrade office blocks that we own in order to generate more rental income to support our budget going forwards and the lighting at Stables, at Highland Stables car park. And next month, we'll have a special council meeting to discuss proposals to develop the largest brownfield site in Chelmsford as an exemplar of urban city centre living and cultural space. And unlike many councils, we haven't cut our support for the voluntary sector and we think that working with them to support community development is a very important part of what we do. So those proposals are on pages twenty one to twenty three and the capital is described in detail on twenty four to twenty eight. Pages twenty nine to thirty three say how we're going to fund it, including the revenue costs of capital, which is something some councils seem to have forgotten about. We are deferring some schemes and deleting others to reduce the impact on the revenue budget. It's worth noting at this point that our, unlike some councils, our external debt is negligible. We have just six pounds per resident. By comparison, our neighbours in Brentwood and Utsalsford each have over two thousand pounds per resident of debt in, per resident of their district. Even with these proposed additions to capital spending, in three years' time, we will still have significantly less than the district average. We will have just three point four times our core spending power. The average for district councils is five, so we're significantly below the district average even with these increases in the capital programme. Pages thirty four to thirty eight give the forward look for the revenue budget and the impact on reserves. We will maintain reserves slightly above the level recommended by the finance officers and that will help us cope with any unexpected shocks that occur. It remains a mystery to all of us in local government that the central government doesn't understand the concept of having an insurance in case something goes wrong, like they invade another country or something or crash the economy, for example. So section eight, pages thirty nine to forty five, is not my report. It's from our chief financial officer and in his professional opinion, the budget is robust and sustainable. Section nine, pages forty six to forty eight, explains how this feeds into setting the council tax. It's worth remembering that we keep only slightly more than ten percent of your council tax bill. Seventy three percent of the rest goes to Essex County Council and the rest to police, fire and parishes. Pages forty nine to fifty four break down the budget by department. Page fifty five onwards covers the whole of the capital budget, including the things previously agreed and details the deferred items that we are proposing. Pulling all this together requires a lot of work by a lot of people. We are a complex organisation that delivers vital services to over a hundred and eighty thousand residents. So we must never forget that this is not just about numbers, this is about people. Many of them very, very vulnerable. We will do our very best to take action on the climate and ecological emergency, build and provide for more affordable homes and develop a fantastic community. We will shape Chelmsford as a leading place in this region to deliver a greener, fairer and more connected community. So I move the recommendations are set out on the agenda. Section one, that council note the report of the section one five one officer and approves two A, appendix one, little one to six, and two B, which is appendix two. I so move.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Could I have a second, er? Thank you. Councillor Whitehead.
Do we have a budget for new microphones? I'm sure you said that last time, but never mind. Anyway, thank you for that. We did discuss it before and we're not going to go through every page tonight, don't worry. It's a model of clarity, I have to say, to Phil and all the team actually for producing this report this evening. It is very easy to read, well, perhaps for some of us, but. Is it a budget? I'm not entirely sure if it's a budget or an estimate. You didn't word budget there, but I'm sure you'll be corrected on that one. But seriously, we discussed this before and I accept and we accept the pressures on all councils really. There's no doubt at all that the situation is dire in lots of them. Birmingham is a classic example of how not to do it, especially on equal pay, which we actually dealt with years and years ago really and got right, but which the government seems to keep trying to undermine by adding increases that are not in line with equal pay. But we have managed that and done very well with that. So you mentioned earlier on, the shortfall in the budget is to be covered by the reserves. Indeed, government has foolishly, in my view, said, yes, just use your reserves for this really. Because of course, it's not sustainable to keep using reserves, especially if you don't have any in the first place and lots of councils around have none. Now, we very kindly left you lots of reserves and you've been using them in various ways and I won't go back through all of those really. But some of them perhaps, in the future, we need perhaps to talk about. Now, you've mentioned the extra council meeting that we're about to have in next month and that covers just one subject really, so. As you know, it's one of my hobby horses, but I'm not going to go through it all in detail this evening. That would be something to save for the future. So let's not worry about that particular point now. But there's a couple of points that are in this report. On pages fifty eight and fifty nine, there's the cost of the new land for the crematorium, which was reduced from six million to four million pounds. And then further down, it says infrastructure costs of six point eight million. Now, they're both delegated to Cabinet, I think, for a final scheme and a business case has to be developed, I think, if I quote the report correctly. But as you know, Maldon, of course, have now instigated a new one, which is due by the end of this year. And clearly that must have some effect because quite a lot of people clearly came from Maldon to us and it's something that we need maybe to look again at. Do we need actually to do this now at all? There are other ones around, that private ones are coming forward. And if we are to save money, that may be one way to look, look at that again really. So as I say, I'm flagging it, not saying you should or shouldn't do it really. I mean, I know what our crematorium is like unfortunately, but nonetheless, we perhaps need to think carefully about that one. On Waterside, yes indeed, the costs are commercially sensitive and it's not for us in this meeting, which is being broadcast, to talk about it really. But what I thought we ought to be doing is consulting the public. Because as things stand, it's the biggest capital project this council has ever put forward. And yet, nothing has been consulted. We consult on little land purchases and we consult all sorts of things and planning generally. But why are we not consulting the public on what you plan to do? And I would ask you to consider that very carefully really because if we're spending X million pounds on producing something, then we should ask the public. I mean, it's one of those things that judicial reviews seem to concentrate on, on consultation and things these days as well really. We've seen it elsewhere. And I wouldn't like us to fall into that trap either really, but if we don't, I mean, we consult on little tiny schemes. The Meadows, for example, was consulted on by potential developers and so on. But we're doing a scheme that's ten times as big as that and yet, have you consulted with the public? Not in the slightest. So I think we need to be sure of that. I mean, there is a budget, all right, I'll use that word, of forty three point six three million on page sixty two. But that's the expense budget. Nowhere in any of these figures that I've ever seen do we actually have an income budget for Waterside. We spend a lot of money on the bridge and that's going ahead, I know that. And there's no income from bridges, but nonetheless, the site itself needs to be sort of rather more clearly defined. The point I'm trying to make now is to flag forward what you're going to be dealing with at the special meeting really because as I say, I'm not nitpicking, I'm not expecting to answer individual little items on that. But I'm just trying to flag the things that we see, which is consultation and proceeds and usage of the site really. Because without that, it is very difficult. I mean, we're all as keen as anybody to see the homeless situation resolved. It's getting worse and of course, it's, I hate to dig up old facts really, but it was the previous Lib Dem administration that sold all our council housing stock. And now, of course, we don't have any of that, whereas other councils around do. So we have to spend a lot of money on this. And from that point of view, we are where we are, so I'm not saying what we should and shouldn't have done. You can mention Mrs Thatcher if you like, but that's not the point really I'm trying to make. We, we have, well, I know you like mentioning Mrs Thatcher. But, but nonetheless, that was then and we are where we are now and you are quite rightly trying to solve that problem. So again, none of us are standing up and criticising what you're trying to do. Perhaps it's how you're trying to do it is, I think, the point that I am, we are trying to make really. So that, from that, I think we need to look carefully at your capital strategy on those things. The idea of deferring ones and the deferred list, yes, sensible thing to do really. Because none of the things you're planning to do at the moment with floodlights and all the rest of it, we don't disagree with any of those. They're the sort of things that this council should be doing really and as I say, I'm not suggesting that. I haven't even mentioned the word pit yet at all really and won't. But it's, it's, it's that building next door that makes noises occasionally. And yeah, it's always full of people. We're delighted to see that that's the case really, as with Riverside. We are successful with all of these things, the museum too. So we, over the years, and you have spent money on improvements. How you spent it and how you budgeted for it, if I can use that for the last time, is perhaps not entirely clear. So that when it comes to your biggest budgeted expenditure, can you please be prepared for that in such a way that the residents, as councillor Thorpe perhaps was saying, it isn't a second-hand car. I mean, this is a brand-new development we're doing. Mr Gold has talked about brownfield land really, a man regrettably who doesn't seem to understand that the leafy parts of this country doesn't have mounds of brownfield land. And the one that we've had, as we all know, is one that is incredibly difficult really with sewers and gas and everything else. And it's not for want of trying by us and by you that it's not ready yet. But we all want to see it developed, don't think we don't want to see it developed. It's how it's developed and what it costs the council, whether we have to borrow money and so on. So that is the point I am making to you this evening. We will abstain on the budget overall, we're not going to go nitpicking on it really. I think one question, last thing, I did ask you before about the actual increases in car parking charges and so on, which you said you would come back to us on because it's nine point eight percent, something like that, shown in the report. And it would be helpful to have some brief idea of what that means to the public, what they will actually be paying in whichever car park it is really. And that perhaps I will finish on. And as I say, special thanks to Phil and all his team and to yourselves that have produced the report, which is clear. And I think all the residents will understand the difficulties, so thank you very much indeed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Knight.
I listened to. I listened to your impassioned plea, councillor Robinson, and it's very difficult to disagree with everything you said. You're in a difficult bind and I don't think anybody could do anything particularly better. This is your fifth budget. And very soon after you came into power, you met the strong headwind of the disease. I've forgotten his name, what is it? Covid. Mr Joe Biden, I'm sorry. Of Covid. Then you had the nasty bout of inflation and now the housing allowances. I don't think any other party could have done any better over the last four or five years in steering the council through some very, very difficult financial tumult. I've got two questions. It's a terrific budget paper from Phil and his team, seventy seven pages. I've got ten questions on every page, self-indulgent to go through all of them, I've distilled them down to two. The first one is that you are financing the twenty four, twenty five budget, the next budget, through one point one million of borrowings internally. Nothing new about that, we've been borrowed internally for years. Except, and this is the big except, my understanding is, let me stop at that point and say, it's very difficult to navigate your way through these numbers. If I've got them wrong, then you will put me right. If I get into the numbers wrong, please put me right. But you're borrowing one point one million and it's usual to borrow money to finance budgets. But normally therefore, things like capital allowances or other things like that. But this time, it's for revenue expenditure. And if it is for revenue expenditure, it means that we're not paying our way. And that's a very, very bad thing to, for us to contemplate in the future. The next one is that in twenty five, twenty six or twenty six, twenty seven, you've got some money there for interest on borrowed money, externally borrowed money, not internally borrowed money. And I think in living memory of most people in this room, I don't think that's been done before, at least not to any significant extent. And the reality, it's over a million pounds. And the reality of it is, I think we collect sixteen or seventeen million pounds from us as taxpayers in this borough, in this city. And if we get five percent out of the sixteen or seventeen million or three percent, it's substantially less than a million pounds. So what in effect you're doing is all the extra money you will get in any one year from us as taxpayers will go on interest on borrowings and some more again. You're doing the right thing with trying to get more money from the government. You're doing the right thing in trying to reduce complexities here, reduce costs. Doesn't mean necessarily redundancies, sometimes it's a better way, you find a better way of doing things or there are things you do that you don't need to do. So I, you know, encourage you obviously to carry on with that. The third one, which is probably a little bit more difficult, is can you have a look at any vanity products, projects? One of them is possibly the Waterside and I know it yet has to be brought properly into. into this domain, into this room. But there were elements in what was discussed two or three months ago that, to me, come under the heading of vanity. You don't have to do it. You don't have to do it, there are other ways of doing it, and it brings money in. That would be something that would be sensible under the present financial situation. And the other one is, I noticed in all the, you're buying an extra £260,000 in, is it hydrogenated oils? That's, I'm totally bought on global warming. I know there's global warming. I know it's down to us. I know it's down to fossil fuels. I know that. I don't need any lectures on that particular one. But in the situation, as a resident of Chelmsford, I don't think we can afford to do those vanity products, this project at this particular time. So those are my suggestions. Please take them on board.
Thank you. councillor Foster.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say a little bit more about the housing situation, as alluded to by councillor Robinson earlier. Because it's put quite succinctly in the budget that the big issue is temporary accommodation. We're housing more households from March 21, 243; November 23, 471. The working assumption in the budget is that it will rise to 620, and that isn't the worst-case scenario. The costs are rising, latest costs are, new cases, loss of subsidy is £13,000 per annum for each household, and people are staying longer. So it's a perfect storm. The, in fact, it's quite interesting to hear about 2019 to 2022. The percentage cost to the budget of temporary accommodation was fairly steady at about 8 or 9%. It is expected to be 14% this year, and it's projected to be 19% next year. However, we at least, as a councillor, have recognized that issue. I'm not sure that all councillors have. And indeed, the chief executive had the article in the municipal journal, which people, when I've been to things recently, people have said, oh, you know, you know that we've got a problem with temporary housing. So we recognize that there is an issue, and we're not standing still. We've brought various changes of policy, and the homeless strategy will be reviewed in 24, 25. The whole council is focused on the problem. The Housing Action Group has completed, well, it is going to carry on, but its action plan will be finalized very soon. There's a draft communications strategy, and we're concentrating, the teams are concentrating on prevention to stop people, you know, we must get across that if people are made homeless, then there is no expectation they can come to us and get a council house. Might take your point. There's secure, we're looking at block bookings of temporary accommodation. We're applying for any government grant that is out there and keeping our eye upon that. We're working with RP partners to make sure that they make best use of the stock. We're getting reports and information from people like Doolock and learning from others. We're working with partners to construct new homes and, you know, making the most of our land. And we're encouraging people to bring land forward for social housing. We also continue to lobby for an increase in local housing allowance, for us not to be connected with Malden and Braintree, because they are, obviously, they're, you know, far lower rents in that area, and for the cost of asylum seekers to be borne by the government. And last but not least, take your point about the costs for Chelmsford Waterside are in this budget, but of course, the benefits will be received in budgets to come. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Goldman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a huge amount to say on the budget, except to say that I'm really proud of the budget, and in very, very difficult circumstances, this is a budget that we can still be proud of. I'd also like to say, you know, thank you to the opposition for being supportive of this and recognizing that these are very, very difficult times that we work in. But I just wanted to state again, for the record, something that I said at Cabinet, which is that I am profoundly worried about central government's lack of understanding of how local government finances work. I said that at Cabinet, I'm saying it again now, because we have had so many conversations with civil servants, representatives from Doolock. We know that we've written to ministers as well, trying to explain to them why councils are in the financial difficulty that there is. And still, they send us sticking plasters, tiny, tiny little sticking plasters. But when they announce it, they make it sound as though it's really big, because to the public, these are big numbers. But when you divide them up between the councils around the country, and when you look at the financial difficulties that so many councils around the country are in, they do not even come close to touching the sides. And then to add insult to injury, when we have a minister, Michael Gove, suggesting that, or indeed insisting on councils, right, spending a lot of their very precious resources on writing reports about how they're going to get value for money out of this sticking plaster they're providing. I just think they just fundamentally have not understood the pressures that councils are under. The whole system needs a complete overhaul. And I would very strongly suggest that that is something that needs to be urgently done by whichever government comes next. And that if they don't, then it will lead to the collapse of local government. And this isn't hyperbole, it will lead to the collapse of local government. And local government, arguably, although Westminster gets all the glory, although the Houses of Parliament and the debates in the Houses of Commons, in the House of Commons get all the TV coverage, all the media coverage, and everybody's interested in what scandal came next. Really, everybody's day-to-day lives are far more affected by what happens in these sorts of council chambers around the country. Whether your bins are collected regularly and on time, whether your parks are maintained, whether housing is provided in the right places, whether the most vulnerable in our society are properly looked after by the staff on the ground. There are so many things that local government do, and if it isn't there, boy, will it be missed. And our society, I don't know how our society will actually continue without it, frankly. And that is the existential threat that we are facing. And I just wanted to make that point, because I think it's incredibly important.
Thank you. councillor Clark.
Thank you. First, I'd like to commend the 151 officer for a thorough report on the budget to this council. It reveals that City Council is coming from a position of strength to tackle the issues contained in the report. This is down to prudent management over several years prior to this administration. It could have been very different, but for the strong level of reserves. The concern is what happens in the next few years. It's clear from the report, conditions are at best unpredictable. As a council, it can cope with the burden of extra costs, such as much higher temporary accommodation, but only in the short term. The horizon, if not checked, to the point of that higher costs may impact the services this council provides. Central government encourages the use of reserves to tackle these shortfalls, and the legacy of previous administrations has meant we can do this. Regarding the use of reserves, this was suggested by the independent group a couple of years ago, along with another measure that is currently being processed. Both were part of a costed budget amendment dismissed by the leader of the council as reckless. What does he consider them to be now, having been forced to do exactly the same thing? The amount of borrowing by this council is rising at the same time as the reserves are reducing. The budget gap is widening. It's a fuse lit by an administration determined to carry out expenditure regardless of the economic climate and the unknown horizon. The degree of restraint, especially with vanity projects, some already under scrutiny, would have been advisable. Madam Chair, history seems to be repeating itself here, the family silver is being plundered. A word of warning to the next administration of this council, and with reference to a well-known incident in 2010, the note in the drawer saying, dear Chief Secretary, I'm afraid there's no money left. This is likely to be replicated here by one much worse. Dear Leader, sorry about the debt.
Thank you. councillor Hawkins.
I firstly wanted to just echo what people have said here this evening, and send a huge thank you to Phil Reeves and his team, and all of our officers this evening.
Could I ask you to put the microphone on, or have it closer?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. We can't hear you. Thank you. God, I've got to now. Thank you. Is that better? I also wanted to say a personal thank you to Phil for walking me through my first budget as a deputy. In my first year delving into the complex world of local government finance, I have witnessed firsthand the tireless efforts of officers, the teams, the political leadership team here, and every member of the Liberal Democrat group. We've all faced challenging decisions. We know that not only it will affect our colleagues, but our friends and family living in Chelmsford, as well as the constituents who voted for us. Excuse me. As we've navigated our way through long meetings, not always in unanimous agreement, and working hard to find compromises, with limited resources and a keen understanding of the financial constraints, we collectively face the responsibility of making decisions that were not only hard, but essential for the prudent management of our community's resources. Tonight, I want to acknowledge the pressing need for the government, regardless of its political colour after the next election, to heed the collective voice of local councils across the UK. The cry for additional funding is not merely a plea, but a demand for the continued support that our communities desperately need and unequivocally deserve. I express my wholehearted support for the recommendations laid out in tonight's budget. Our decisions were not taken lightly, and the path we forge is one of conscientious consideration for the well-being of all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Highland.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I looked at this budget, the question I asked myself is, what will residents think of this budget? With the additional expenditure, where most of it is being spent once again within the city centre, Lockside, Waterside, and we've spoken a little bit about the theatre expenditure, taking priority over services for the rest of Chelmsford. When can residents outside the city centre look forward to expenditure elsewhere? Within the papers, on page 21, table 13, you talked about a project, Project Two, the Vistion site, as a likely refurbishment without a business case, as it stands right now. Is that likely to be a commercial? Or will the option be looked at to convert that to an affordable homes as an option? And item eight on the same page was, what calculation has been made that any nomination rights will become available at the chess site, where we're giving them some, another As I understand it, I hope that chess are likely to have, unfortunately, a full occupancy, and therefore vacancies or available voids for our own, our homeless that are in alternative accommodation, as it stands right now, would not be used at that site. But I thought there was some calculation within that that says, we'll get some money back out of that exchange. So if there is any calculations, please share them. The shared ownership rights that the City Council, have they actually retained any ownership rights of that site? Or is that £600,000 that have gone completely to chess in two strands not bought as an option of that land? Thank you.
Thank you. councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to say a thank you to the council in taking us through this hard time, and as well as the country administration in taking us through this hard time as well. We all know that we were using the word pandemic, so that's happened all throughout the world. We understand the increase in costs and inflation is the main reason is this. So I just wanted to convey my thanks to the council and also to the country administration in taking us through this difficult period. At the same time, I would like to say, coming out of the pandemic, I wouldn't go and buy a car.
Thank you. councillor Poley, and then Davidson, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. You'll forgive my staying, sitting down? Yeah, I'm sure that councillor Robinson, or the second to the motion, will respond in much more detail and much more specific about the substantive points, or other substantive points. But I just wanted to come back briefly on the rather sideways remark that councillor Whitehead made about it being us who sold our council houses, and maybe that was minimizing our responsibilities and our capabilities in providing the homes to the homeless. A couple of things. The key point is that the housing associations, and CHP, for example, which remains our major provider of registered landlord housing, registered landlords are under just the same degree of financial pressures as we are. Different elements of their business. But looking both at the government support of registered landlords and their own requirements in modernizing and responding to problems within their own housing stock, means that I would implore the opposition here, in talking to the government, to underline that it's not just the council that needs a more capable and understanding look from its central government, but its housing associations too. In fact, CHP and others are being very responsive to our homelessness and temporary accommodation needs by providing just as much as Colchester, for example, is able to find within its own housing stock. So I think that this is an irrelevance, and we, in looking at the fairness of things overall in this borough, need to be very supportive of our housing associations in also underlining to the government that they are being kept extremely short of funds. Second point, in response to the comment about borrowing, which was a bit of a sideways remark as well, about it must be a bad thing. The implication of the Tory councillor who made that comment, I'm sorry, I forget which one it was, is that one never, ever, ever invests for the future. Yes, investment has a financial cost for the revenue account now, which we came used to it not having when interest rates were zero or not very much at all. But we must find a balance between investing for the future versus not looking at the cost of borrowing at all, be it internal or external borrowing. We have to find that balance, but we must equally look at projects to ensure that they provide value for money for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I do feel I need to express some disappointment at the debate we've had on the budget. Disappointment that I understand that the opposition are going to abstain, and disappointment that they haven't come forward with any alternative proposals. So as councillor Poley has just been referring to, sideways comments about our budget, I don't think are very helpful if there isn't an alternative on the table. Councillor Whitehead talked about Waterside. Actually, we have consulted on the proposals for Waterside. We've brought proposals, we've brought reports here, time after time. We've had at least two sessions that officers have run at the Essex Record Office for members of the public. We've, officers sent out monthly emails to anybody who wanted to sign up for them, informing them on progress. We also consulted two or three years ago on a planning framework for the Waterside development, which I think is a development that we all agree needs to happen, because that's a massive brownfield site. And we need to develop it into something that Chelmsford is proud of, as well as providing extra housing, which is much needed, and opening up the riverfront and doing a lot more. So I'm disappointed to hear councillor Knight complaining about the budget, which, he didn't use complaining about the budget, which, he didn't use this word, but he's basically saying the budget's not sustainable. We have been saying the budget is not sustainable. Public finances, local government finance is not sustainable. Every council in the country is finding this. Our budget is not going to be sustainable beyond the end of this coming year unless the government does something about it. So I'm disappointed that the government's answer recently was to give us an extra couple of hundred thousand pounds. In the context of a budget that started seven and a half million pounds short, and let's be clear, half of that is due to the housing crisis and the effect of that on our budget. 3.7 million of extra provision needed to be made next year. It's disappointing that the government doesn't understand better than that. It's also disappointing, one or two of the other side swipes about transparency. On the one hand, councillor Thorp apps earlier commenting about transparency. I'm grateful to councillor Whitehead for confirming that this is, I quote, 'a model of clarity', this budget. Over the last few years, the transparency in the budget has increased, and it's increased again this year. The objective has been to be very clear about the numbers. And I'm grateful that councillor Whitehead acknowledges that the situation is dire. But again, it's disappointing, one or two of the suggestions. Let's not go ahead with the Waterside Vanity Project, you called it. I don't, sorry, I was looking at councillor Knight. Apologies, councillor Whitehead, you didn't say that. But if we were not to go ahead with that, councillor Knight needs to understand that there is funding from Homes England that would need to be repaid. That would make the budget significantly worse, not better. But to councillor Whitehead as well, in relation to the proposal to develop a new crematorium and cemetery, I'm afraid that, work from where I'm standing, if we can't produce a business case and make that work, then not going ahead with that will also make our finances significantly worse, not better. So I think we need to be clear about all of those things, and my final disappointment, which I think councillor Whitehead has alluded to in the past, is that councillor Galley hasn't been here to help the opposition bring forward their budget proposals, because he was the one who actually understood the local government finances, the city council's finances. So we continue to miss his presence. Thank you.
Councillor Franks, yeah?
Yeah, I think that this budget does present a fair and effective use of our money in light of the enormous inflationary and budgetary pressures that we're facing, and as many other councils across the country are facing, almost entirely at the hands of the Conservative Group's colleagues at Westminster, especially given that, like the budget report and our council leader mentioned, Chelmsford core revenue funding from government is £11 million, a year less than in 2010 to 2011, had it been kept up with inflation. This budget and the plans associated with it protect so many of the key cultural facilities that make Chelmsford a great place to live, like the theatre, our leisure centres, and maintaining our history as a market town through our indoor and outdoor markets, as well as maintaining a great number of other services and our wider environment, while continuing to support residents in need through the cost of living and housing crises that continue to stretch almost run of all to their limits. I hope that we will get more support from whoever is running central government next year, so that this administration can continue to invest in Chelmsford. And as a final point, I question why some members of the council seem to consider trying to maximise our ability to deliver a significant amount of affordable housing a frivolous use of our resources. From personal experience, our housing crisis is making simply living in Chelmsford financially difficult for many young people, and we need to be able to deliver as much affordable housing as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Could I ask for councillor Robinson to have the right to reply to all questions?
Thank you very much. Yes. There's quite a lot there, wasn't there? So yes, councillors Franks and Davidson and Puley addressed some of the points that have come up. I did wonder whether, so admittedly, yes, perhaps I went on a bit earlier and you zoned out, but I answered actually many of the points that have been raised in the discussion. Yeah, on reserves, yes, we did inherit some. We've also added to them. We've, for example, we did secure, as you know, £5.6 million within the last year on the VAT refund, a case which Chelmsford Council led on behalf of councils across the country to challenge the need to charge VAT on leisure centres, and so that is a benefit to every council. I have suggested to other council leaders around the country they might like to make as a thank you payment for all the hard work that our finance officers did on that, because they owe us one. I do find it odd that it's reckless to increase spending to address the problems that we're talking about. What I find puzzling, perhaps councillor Puley kind of alluded to what councillor Whitehead said, and also councillor Knight, we've got problems. You say, yes, housing is a problem, or climate action is a problem, oh, we don't want to do anything about it. I mean, that seemed to be councillor Knight's approach to climate change. I'm glad he realises the problem. I'm disappointed he doesn't think we should do anything about it. Five years ago, I stood here and asked the council to, nearly six years ago, to adopt a climate emergency declaration, and you refused, saying, don't want to rush into these things. It's been raining for almost the last three months. And that is just one of the things that we're seeing about climate change. So I'm not going to take any criticism at all for the action that we're taking on that. On the cemetery and crematorium, as we said at Cabinet in answer to councillor Massey, if there is a business case, then we will pursue it. Moldon isn't building a cemetery, and that's what we're running out of space, so we need to look at that. And it will come back to Cabinet, and you can criticise it if you want, but we haven't made a decision. We're making provision in the budget. The budget is, we've used that word a lot this evening, haven't we? And this is all part of the weird and wacky world of local government finance, which is, when is a budget, not a budget? I mean, this is a budget with lots of little budgets inside it, and some of them are estimates. So, yeah, it's a struggle to understand. I've taken a while to get to grips with it, and councillor Whitehead admitted last year that he never did, and he left that as councillor Davidson said to councillor Galley. As was being mentioned, we did consult on the development framework for Waterside, maybe you missed it, and all the other things that have happened that has just been mentioned. No, we don't have any income yet. So in fact, this report is all the bad news from Waterside is in the report. All the good news is yet to come, and we'll talk about that in a month's time. So yes, there's a lot of money has been spent by your administration and by our administration. We have spent a lot of money. But as was just mentioned, if we don't go ahead with it, we have to give the £13 million back to Homes England, and that certainly wouldn't be a good idea. As councillor Puley said, there was a little note of discord from councillor Whitehead, so I'm afraid I must respond. When he said, 'We're all keen to see this homelessness situation resolved', if he was that keen, why did he cave in to countryside's demand to reduce their affordable housing requirement at Beaulieu? The 27% affordable housing requirement, not the 35% that we're insisting on, means we're 348 affordable homes less than we would have had. 348 families who don't have a house, but would have had if they had stuck to that policy. In their 16 years, they never once delivered on 35% affordable housing, not once. And when did they build social rent homes? Over 12 years ago. Smith Hughes Close was the last time they built social rent housing. Last year, we opened 12 in Woodall Road. We've got planning permission for 58, and we've got a lot more in the pipeline, as councillor Foster explained. And yes, we did sell off the house. We created CHP because your government, that you campaigned for and got elected in 1979, would not allow us to invest in housing stock, would not allow us to borrow the money. So yes, we bequeathed £62 million in a capital receipt to you, that you spent 16 years spending that £62 million on other things other than housing. Car park charges, we will circulate the information. I'm delighted, you're delighted with the theatre, but you opposed it. And councillor Knight, thank you for saying you don't think anyone could have done any better. I'll take that. Thank you very much. The 1.1 million, we're not allowed to borrow to fund revenue, but we are taking money from reserves. So I'm not quite sure I understood the question. I'm happy to discuss that with you afterwards. Yes, of course, we are, and we said we would, and councillor Davidson said this last year and the year before, that in the medium term, we would borrow externally for the first time. The reason we not borrowed externally for such a long time is that capital receipt from selling off the houses, which has gradually been reduced over the last 20 years. But as I said in my budget presentation, our debt, even in three years' time, will be significantly less than the average for all the district councils in England. Because we deferred £14 million of capital schemes in the budget, we no longer need to borrow to finance Chelma Waterside, so we've actually made a saving. As sufficient resources are now available, it's primarily financed by the government grant from Homes England and community infrastructure levy, and therefore it is actually affordable. Much of the debt that we propose to take on is about housing, for housing, to address those housing problems. And, I mean, if you're not bothered by the social problem of having 600 homeless families, if you aren't, I mean, you should be, but if you aren't, you should be bothered by the financial cost of this council. And we will save money, we will save money by spending that capital. We will save on the revenue budget from putting people in bed and breakfast, which is a stain on our society that there are over 300 Chelmsford children living in hotels. That's appalling. That's truly appalling. Their life chances have been shattered because they don't have a proper house to live in. And we want to build them a proper house, so they can go to school near where they live, and we don't have to send them out of the district. I really, really hate having to do that. We've got 150 Chelmsford families who've had to be uprooted from Chelmsford and moved to Peterborough, and Northampton and other parts of the country, because they aren't the houses, the affordable houses in Chelmsford, partly because you didn't build enough. As a country, Conservative and Labour governments have not built enough houses for 30 years. Yes, councillor Clark had similar queries to councillor Knight and used the phrase the family silver being plundered. Wrong, wrong, wrong. Because when Harold Macmillan said it about his own government, he was talking about selling off national assets. We are not selling off our capital assets, as the previous administration did. That's why we want a partnership agreement to develop Waterside, so that we can control what happens and not sell it off to the highest bidder. As councillor Whitehead and I are completely agreed, it is completely mad that this government is encouraging councils to sell off assets. That would be selling off the family silver. We aren't doing it. Councillor Highland asked, why is it all being spent in the centre? Well, over 60% of the population lives in central Chelmsford, but in my budget speech, I did point out that we are investing in Southwood and Farrows Leisure Centre and planting trees right across the district, and many other things. I don't think it's suitable to convert a Vistion office block to housing. We are investing in that to generate more income from a commercial let. And on the chess site, we are going to get 100% nomination rights. There are currently nine units, there will be 24 in future. So that's a significant increase, and we will get 100% nomination rights. And as councillor Foster explained, we're also working with YMCA to deliver another 30-odd units there for young homeless people. So I think I've answered everybody's points that came up during the discussion. I just, as councillor Goldman said, very proud of this budget. It is extremely tough for all parties who are running local councils, but there are lots of good things that we have been able to do that we are pushing forward with. Despite that, I live in hope that this government will be gone within the next 12 months. The sooner that happens, the better. And then hopefully, we'll have a government that actually takes local government seriously. So I move the recommendations as set out in the budget report, and I hope everybody will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now ask Mr Sharma Bird to conduct a recorded vote on the budget and council tax resolution before us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll just run through councillors one by one and ask for your vote, starting with councillor Ditcham. Thank you. Councillor Armstrong?
Abstain.
Councillor Chambers? Councillor Dan Clark?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Hazel Clark?
Four.
Councillor Paul Clark?
Against.
Councillor Davy?
Four.
Councillor Anne Davidson?
Four.
Councillor Chris Davidson?
Four.
Councillor Steve Davis?
Abstain.
Councillor Deakin?
Abstain.
Councillor Dudley? Councillor Dobson? Councillor Ealy? Councillor Franks?
Four.
Councillor Foster? Councillor Friskoner?
Four.
Councillor Fuller? Councillor Marie Goldman?
Four.
Councillor Simon Goldman?
Four.
Councillor Grundy? Councillor Haw?
Four.
Councillor Hawkins? Councillor Highland?
Against.
Councillor Jeeps? Councillor Knight? Councillor Lodge?
Four.
Councillor Lee? Councillor Mascot?
Abstain.
Councillor Massey? Councillor Moore? Councillor O'Brien? Councillor Papper? Councillor Puley? Councillor Potter? Councillor Rajesh? Councillor Raven? Councillor Robinson? Councillor Sampson?
Four.
Councillor Scott? Councillor Sherlock?
Four.
Councillor Andrew Sojcin?
Four.
Councillor Jeanette Sojcin?
Four.
Councillor Still? Councillor Sullivan? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thompson?
Four.
Councillor Fullpaps? Councillor Trum?
Four.
Councillor Walsh? Councillor Whitehead? And councillor Yell?
Four.
Thank you. So that's been approved.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommendations is agreed. Agenda under item nine is the submission for approval of the pay policy statement for 2024/25, which councillor Marie Goldman will present.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a policy that we are obliged to bring to council every year. It hasn't substantially changed at all, so therefore I'd just like to move it as set out in the papers.
Thank you. Have I a second up? Okay, any questions? No. Okay. The recommendation is to approve the pay policy statement in the report. Is the recommendation agreed? Okay, thank you. The recommendation to approve the pay policy statement is agreed. Right, we're moving on to urgent business. I've not been informed of any urgent items of business? No? Okay. This concludes this evening's business, and I thank you for your attendance. Once the meeting has closed, will members please stay?